Om Namah Bhagavate Vasudevaya. Om Namah Bhagavate Vasudevaya. Om Namah Bhagavate Vasudevaya. Chakshuranvritam ye na tasmai Shri Gurave namaha. Shri Chaitanya Manobhishtam sthapitam ye na bhutale. Swayam rupahakadamaheyam dadatisvapadantikam. Namavom Vishnupadaya Krishna Prishthayabhatale. Shrimate Bhaktivedanta Swaminithinamini. Namaste Saraswati Deve Gauravani Pracharini. Nirvisesha Sunyavadi Paschatyade Shatari. Jai Shri Krishna Chaitanya Prabhunitya Ananda. Shri Advaita Gadadhara. Shri Vasadigaurabhaktavrinda. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna. I offer obeisances to all the devotees who have assembled for this special session on the occasion of Gaurupurnima. Yesterday, we have celebrated the festival and continuing with that same mood, we will discuss a few glories of Lord Gaurangam Mahaprabhu today also. Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, as all of us know, is the divine merciful incarnation of the Supreme Lord Krishna and he is Krishna himself in the mood of Shrimati Radha Rani. As we know. Radha Krishna pranayavikritair haladini shaktirasma. Ek atmanavapi bhuvipura dehabhedam gatautau. Chaitanyakhyam prakatam adhunatadvayam jainkya mahaptam. Radha bhavadyutisuvallitam nauvme krishnasvarupam. So Lord Krishna wanted to experience the emotions of Shrimati Radha Rani. Because as the Supreme Lord, he is not enjoying as much as his devotees are enjoying. Although he is the recipient of service by his devotees, he could notice that my devotees who are serving me are experiencing more pleasure than me. Okay, in my, they are receiving more, they are receiving more pleasure by serving me than I do by, by receiving that service. So therefore, I must experience that pleasure that they are experiencing. So let me take their position. So with this mood, he has accepted the emotions of a devotee. And the best of all devotees is Shrimati Radha Rani. Lord Krishna appeared in the form of Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu with the complexion and with the emotion of Shrimati Radha Rani. Okay, so that's the purpose of Mahaprabhu's appearance. Radha bhavadyutisuvallitam nauvme krishnasvarupam. Now let's discuss, let me show one sloka and we will recite that also. Someone can recite with me? Prashastha, I just saw you somewhere, yeah, Prashastha, you can recite? Shri Radhaya pranayamahima kidrisova nayiva.
Shri Radhaya pranayamahima kidrisova nayiva.
Swadyo ye na bhuta madhurima kidrisova madhiyaha. You can't hear? Okay. Saukyam chasyamadanubhavata kidrisove tilo bhaat. Tad bhava dhyasamajanishachi garbhasindho harindhu. Krishna had three unfulfilled desires. One, Shri Radhaya pranayamahima kidrisova nayiva. He was thinking what is the extent of Shrimati Radha Rani's, what is the greatness of Shrimati Radha Rani's love for me? He wants to understand that. Swadyo ye na adbhuta madhurima kidrisova madhiyaha. Means when Shrimati Radha Rani looks at me, she relishes my sweetness more than I do. So what is the extent of my sweetness? Krishna wanted to understand that. Then saukyam chasyamadanubhavata kidrisam vethilo bhaat. What is the saukyam? What is the happiness that she is experiencing by serving me? So first reason is he wants to understand the greatness of Krishna Radha Rani's love. Second reason is he wants to understand the extent of his own sweetness. Because sugar cannot understand how sweet it is. Only someone who is tasting sugar can understand how sweet it is. So that's the second reason. Third, someone while tasting sugar, what is the pleasure that a person is deriving? If at all one likes sugar, okay? Now here the assumption is everyone likes sugar. So Mahaprabhu wanted to understand, wanted to experience the sweetness that Radha Rani is experiencing, okay? So these are the three reasons because of which Mahaprabhu appeared as the son of Sachi Mata. Okay, so here is a very, there are many slokas. I want to, I want to recite one sloka. This is the most beautiful sloka. Prema namad prema namad bhutartha. Sravanapathagata kasyana namahimna. Koveta kasyavrinda. Kovajana tiradhham paramarasachamakkaramadhuryasimam. Ekas chaitanya chandra. Paramakarunaya sarvama vischakara. Prema namad bhutartha. This is a sloka that is somewhat similar to that bhajan. Yadi gourna hoyitu. If Lord Gaurangam Mahaprabhu is not there, how would we understand Radha Krishna Tatva? How will we, how do we get access to the holy names of Krishna? How do we get access to the opulence of Vrindavan? So let's see. Prema namad. Can someone switch off their mic, whoever is. So he says, prema namad bhutartha. Prema namad bhutartha. So if Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is not there, who will understand that prema or Krishna prema, love of Godhead is the highest spiritual achievement? Who will understand that? Who will understand that my aspiration as a human being in this world is to develop love of Godhead? So it is Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu's grace made us understand that prema is my real artha. Prema pumartho mahan. We understood that Krishna prema, developing Krishna prema is the topmost goal of my life only by Mahaprabhu's grace. Sravanapathagata kasyana namahimna. Only by Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu's mercy, we, we could understand the significance of chanting the holy names of Krishna. So holy name of Krishna is the most merciful form of the Lord. You know, when we are chanting Hare Krishna Mahamanta. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. What does that mean? Hare Krishna, Hare Shrimati Radha Rani. Krishna is Krishna, okay? So Hare Krishna, when you say they are together. It is the sambhoga mood. So madhurya rasa or the sweetness of relationship between Radha and Krishna is experienced in two ways. One is vipralambha, second is sambhoga. Sambhoga means the joy of union. Vipralambha means the pain of separation. So when the lover and the beloved come together, they experience the joy of union. And for some reason, when they are away from each other, they also, they experience the pain of separation and that pain is also joy. When you are missing your friend, when you love your friend so much and the friend is not next to you, you are missing that friend. The heart is filled with memories, remembrances and the sweet exchanges that you had with that friend. So that also is a source of nourishment to the heart, isn't it? So that's also a very wonderful source of nourishment to the heart. So that also is spiritual joy. So love between Radha and Krishna is experienced both, at both times when they meet and when they get separated. So in both ways that is experienced, okay? So when you say Hare Krishna Mahamanta, when you say Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Radha and Krishna are together. Okay, Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna. Then you say Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Then Krishna and Hare are little away, separated, right? So that is the experience of separation, okay? Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Then Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama means in separation, Hare is calling out Lord Krishna and Krishna is calling out Radha Rani in separation from each other. Then again they come together. So Hare Rama, Hare Rama, okay? Then Rama Rama, Hare Hare. In their union, they again experience the joy of being with each other. So basically this one, one chanting of Hare Krishna Mahamanta can also be seen as a meditation on Radha Krishna's pleasure pastimes of union and separation, right? When you say Hare and Krishna, they are together. But when you say Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, they are little away. Vipralambha sambhoga bhutartha. So anyways, now coming back to our sloka. Prema namanvritam prema namad bhutartha. Sravanapathasravanapathagata kasyana namahimna. If Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is not there, who will understand that developing love for Krishna is the supreme goal of life? If Mahaprabhu does not descend, who will understand that, understand the deeper meanings, esoteric meanings of the holy name of Krishna? Koveta kasyavrinda. If Mahaprabhu is not there, who will understand the glory of Vrindavan? The auspicious place of the pastimes of Lord Krishna? Who will enter the sweetness of the Vrindavan pastimes of Krishna? Madhuriyeshamadhuriyeshapravesaha. What madhura? Vrindavana vipinamahamadhuriyeshapravesaha. Vrindavan is a land which is filled with the pastimes of Krishna which are very sweet. So we got entrance into that Vrindavan pastimes of Krishna by Mahaprabhu's grace. He is the one who instructed his great associates, Lord Rupa Goswami and Sanathan Goswami to revive Vrindavan pastimes, to speak more and more about Vrindavan pastimes and to compile divine literatures on this Vrindavan pastimes. Next. Paramarasachamak kovajanati radham paramarasachamakkaramadhuryasimam. Kovajanati radham, who can understand Shrimati Radha Rani? Who could ever know Shrimati Radha Rani? Who is Radha Rani, the most wonderful and unsurpassable embodiment of Madhurya Rasa? Prema rachamakkaramadhuryasimam. She is the limit of the experience of Madhurya. Limit of the experience of sweetness of Prema Rasa. She is the topmost devotee of Krishna. Ekas chaitanya chandra paramakarunaya sarvama vischakara. It's only by Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu's grace, one and only Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, who is the one who has inaugurated the greatness of all these secrets. He is the one who revealed all these great secrets, okay? So there is one incident that today we will just meditate on the glories of Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu's compassion, how compassionate he is. We'll discuss a few slokas and we'll also discuss a few pastimes in which Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu showed extreme degree of compassion. In Jagannathpur, Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu had so many loving associates and devotees. So these devotees consider Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu as their life and soul. And one of them is Sarvam Bhattacharya, very old devotee, elderly devotee. And when Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu came to Jagannathpur for the first time, he came alone. Actually, when he was traveling, he was accompanied by Nityananda, Jagadhananda, Damodara, Mukunda, four close associates. So Mahaprabhu, after he took sanyas, he wanted to go to Vrindavan. Somehow he ended up in Shantipur because of Nityananda Prabhu's intervention. And from Shantipur, where Sachi Mata decided that Mahaprabhu should stay in Jagannathpur so that all the Navadvip devotees also could get to know about Mahaprabhu's news. So Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu decided to make Jagannathpur as his headquarters. So he was coming from Shantipur to Jagannathpur accompanied by Nityananda, Jagadhananda, Damodara, Mukunda. So on his way, Nityananda Prabhu broke sanyas danda of Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. And he threw that sanyas danda in a river. So Mahaprabhu became extremely upset. He said, why did you make, break my sanyas danda? That's my only property, as a sanyasi, I don't have anything. I don't have even hair also. The only property that I have is my sanyas danda and you have broken that also. Then Nityananda Prabhu said, no, I don't know where your sanyas danda is, right? You are in so much ecstasy that when you are jumping up and down while doing Kiratan, you fell on your own danda and the danda broke into pieces, right? I didn't do anything. So hearing this, Mahaprabhu became very upset. He became very angry. He said, I will not go with you. I will not travel with you, I will go alone. So Mahaprabhu left this whole company and he just ran on his own to Jagannathpur. As Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu reached Jagannathpur, the intensity of his ecstasy increased to peaks. And because that's the moment for the first time in his manifest pastimes, he is coming to Jagannathpur. He is about to take the darshan of Lord Jagannathji. His heart was overwhelmed with joy. Did you ever experience, did you ever, do you remember the experience of going to a dham for the first time? For the first time, you are meeting someone whom you love so much, someone whom you adore so much. So that, that pleasure moment, that fan moment is very special, very unique. So here is Mahaprabhu in the mood of a devotee, going to Jagannathpur for the first time. So he was so joyful. In the joy, he just fell unconscious. So everyone thought that this sanyasi just fainted. And maybe when someone faints, there may be hundred different speculations. Okay, maybe he is sick, maybe he did not eat properly. Hmm, he fainted or he died, hundred different speculations can be there. Different people are speculating in different ways. But Sarvam Bhattacharya took a cotton swab and kept next to Mahaprabhu's nostrils. And there is very slight movement of that cotton swab. So Mahaprabhu is alive, that is clear to Sarvam Bhattacharya. And one more thing became clear to Sarvam Bhattacharya. He felt that this is not fainting because of hunger or exhaustion or sickness or some other reason. He is in deep ecstasy, he is in trance. He is in a very high emotional state, that's the reason for his fainting. So his fainting is not because of any other ordinary reason. It's extraordinary state of unconsciousness where he is totally absorbed in Krishna consciousness. So he immediately revived him and brought him to his home. So when he brought him to his home, Mahaprabhu is still in unconscious mood, okay? So then our Sarvam Bhattacharya waited for his revival. Meanwhile, Nityananda, Jagadhananda, Damodara, Mukunda, all these great personalities came to, came back to the, they came to Jagannathpur and they were searching for Mahaprabhu. And they met one devotee named Gopinath Patnaik. Okay, not Gopinath Patnaik, Gopinath Acharya. So Gopinath Acharya is the brother-in-law of Sarvam Bhattacharya. So Gopinath Acharya took all these four devotees to Sarvam Bhattacharya's house and informed them that Mahaprabhu is, is with Sarvam Bhattacharya, he is safe, don't worry. So then they all saw Mahaprabhu, Mahaprabhu revived himself and, and later Sarvam Bhattacharya wanted to train Mahaprabhu in Vedanta. You are a sanyasi, you are young sanyasi, just twenty-four years old. So naturally, if, if you don't, if you don't re-study Vedanta, you won't be able to continue your principles of sanyas. So sanyasi means you should be rooted in his philosophical understanding. So this is his understanding and Mahaprabhu silently heard, okay, fine, whatever you ask me to do, I will do. Then Sarvam Bhattacharya said that, I will train you, I will teach you in Vedanta. He is very old person and Mahaprabhu is just young, twenty-four-year-old sanyasi. So for seven days, Sarvam Bhattacharya was trying to train our Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu in Vedanta. So after seven days, he asked him, I have been speaking, speaking, speaking for such a long time. You are not speaking any, anything back, are you understanding it or not? Then Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu said, you are explaining Vedanta Sutra, but your explanations are very confusing to me. The understanding given by Vedavyaas in Vedanta Sutra are very crystal clear like bright sun in the sky. But your explanations are like clouds covering the sun. When clouds are there in the sky, you can't see the sun clearly. So your explanations are like clouds that are covering the clear understanding of the Vedas, Vedanta Sutra. So then he was surprised, my God, seven days you are silent? Just to, just to make this comment now that my explanations are like clouds? Okay, tell me, what is your understanding? Cloudless understanding, tell me that. Then Mahaprabhu started speaking. He spoke sambandha, abhidaya and proyojana. So Vedanta Sutra and all our scriptures basically teaches three things. One is sambandha, what is my relationship with Supreme Lord Krishna? Second is abhidaya. Abhidaya means the process of reviving that relationship which is bhaktiyoga. Third is proyojana, okay? The ultimate result of establishing that relationship which is to develop Krishna prema. So this is the reason and this is the essence of understanding Vedanta Sutra. And Shrimad Bhagavatam is the cream of Vedanta Sutra. It's the natural commentary on Vedanta Sutra. So and many more explanations and Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, when he said like this, our Sarvam Bhattacharya became transformed. Earlier, he had some impersonalistic tendencies, but now he is completely transformed into a pure Vaishnavah. He became a big fan of Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, okay? So in this way, Mahaprabhu has transformed the heart of our Sarvam Bhattacharya and made him into a devotee and he made Jagannathpur as his headquarters. So now after some time, Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu decided to go to South India, fine. So the reason that he quoted was that I want to search for my lost brother. Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu had a brother named Vishwa Rupa, his elder brother. And he already took sanyas before Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu took sanyas. And Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu wanted to go and search for him. So he called his devotees at Jagannathpur, right? He held their hands and humbly informed them, my dear devotees, all of you are more than my life. Toma saba janayami pranadhika kari. Pranachadaiaya thoma sabachadite napari. I can effortlessly give up my life, but I cannot give up all of you. Pranadhika kari, you are more than my life, okay? So I can easily give up my life, but I cannot give up all of you. Tumi saba bandhu mora bandhukritya kailae. Ihaani mora jagannatha dekhailae. So why Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is calling all these devotees like Nityananda, Jagadhananda, Damodara, Mukunda and saying that you are my life? The answer is, bandhukritya kailae. You have done great favor to me. And what a bandhu, a friend or a relative is supposed to do, that you have done to me. What is that? Ihaani mora jagannatha dekhailae. You have brought me to Jagannathpur and showed me Lord Jagannath. So that's why you are my friends. You know, what does that mean? The important lesson that Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is giving to all of us is, whoever helps us to come to Krishna, whoever assists us to come in, come closer to Supreme Lord Jagannath, he is the greatest friend. We may have so many friends and the friendship can be established on various levels for various reasons. Okay, you fed me, you are my friend. You gave me water, you are my friend. You like rasgulla, I also like rasgulla, we are friends, okay? Or I like rasgulla, you don't like rasgulla, we are friends because whenever you get rasgulla, you give it to me, okay? Because you don't eat it. So there may be hundred different reasons for establishing friendship, okay? Here we both, we both are coming from the same place, same country, same mother tongue, etc. But the real reason for friendship are, the most sustainable friendships are established on a spiritual plane with Krishna in the center. Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is giving this important lesson by this statement that you are my real relatives. Toma saba bandhu mora bandhukritya kailae. You are my greatest relatives and friends because you have brought me to Jagannathpur and showed me Jagannath. So whoever is contributing to our spiritual life in some way or the other, whoever is bringing us closer to Krishna, whoever is inspiring us to come closer to Krishna is our dearest friend. So then Mahaprabhu continued. Ebe saba sthane muii mago ekadani. Sabemeli agnadena yavedakshini. So because of our friendship, I am going to ask you one little favor. You know what is that? Ekadani, please give me one little charity. Sabemeli agnadha, all of you together give me one agna, permission here. Agna here basically is permission. Agna literally means order me, okay? But here he is asking for permission. Permission for what? Permission to go to South India Yatra. I want to go for South India Yatra, please give me permission. So I beg this charity. Then Mahaprabhu said, the reason now. Neela chale tumi saba rahitavat, rahibetavat. I will go to South India. I will travel all the way from Orissa, then Andhra Pradesh, then Tamil Nadu. I will go all the way to Setubandha. Setubandha is the place where Lord Ramachandra has built that bridge across the ocean. So I will go up to there and then I will come back, okay? So neela chale tumi saba rahibetavat. Till then you stay at Neelachal, Neelachal means Jagannathpur. I will tour throughout South India by walk. He is not booking a flight to Kanyakumari by the way, okay? He has no bus also, no train also, no balakat also. He will walk down, how many months it will take, how many years it will take, no one has any clue, but he wants to go there. So let me go there and then you stay here. What is this, yatra means so many people should go. We are going alone and how can you call it yatra? We also come with you. So the reason he said. Vishwarupa sidhiprapti janenasakala. Dakshinadesha udharite kare nai chala. So I am going there because I want to search for Vishwarup, my dear brother. By this time Vishwarup has already passed away. Sidhiprapti means he has attained spiritual world. But Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is cheating his own associates. He is saying that I will leave, I will go search for my brother. He is saying that I will leave, I will go search for my brother, you don't come with me, okay? He is cheating them that he is searching for his brother. But Dakshinadesha udharite kare nae chala, just to help all the people of South India to come out of their materialistic tendencies and chant the holy names of Krishna. Mahaprabhu is cheating his own personal associates. Right, he is cheating his own personal associates to preach to all of us. Right, knowing everything, Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu was aware that Vishwarupa has already passed away. But still, he said this. Suniyasabara manihaila mahadukka, nishshabdahaila sabara sukaila mukha. By hearing these statements from Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, everybody's heart was filled with so much distress. Nishshabdahaila, everyone became silent, not in acceptance, but in rejection of Mahaprabhu's proposal. Sabara sukaila mukha, you become silent when you accept, you become silent when you reject also, right? So with silence is what, you can understand the expression, right? Just because somebody is silent, that does not mean he is agreeing with you. When you disagree also, he may be silent, when you agree also, he may be silent. So all the associates of Lord Chaitanya became very silent in disagreement. So after a few moments of silence, Nityananda Prabhu, the closest associate of Lord Chaitanya, started speaking. Nityananda Prabhu kehe, aiche kai chehaye, ekaki aabi yaive tumi kee yaha sahaye. Aiche kai chehaye, esa kesa ho sakta hai, how can this happen? How can you go alone for yatra? We will also come with you. Ekaki aibe tumi, how can you go alone? Yehi yaha sahaye, who will help you? Because Nityananda Prabhu is very concerned about Mahaprabhu's safety. Of course, he is the Supreme Lord, there is no danger for him. But from another perspective, he is like a sanyasi, young sanyasi, who is always in a trance of chanting the names of the Lord. So sometimes some rogues may attack him and who will hold his water pot? Who will hold his garments? Who will take care of his food if he is always in ecstasy? So someone should accompany him. So we cannot tolerate this, please take one or two of us with you. Please allow us to come with you, that's what Nityananda Prabhu said. Then Nityananda Prabhu is intensifying his proposal. Earlier, he said, you take some of us, then he said, I know everything, you take me, okay? Dakshinera tirthapatha amisabajani, amisangeyai prabhu agnadha tumi. I know all the pathways of South India, okay? Where is Kanchipuram, where is Tirupati, where is Rirangam, where is Antapadmanabu Temple? All the different perumals, where are they? I know, I know Coobur, Godavari, Ahovilam. I know all the places of South India, all the holy places of South India, I will come with you, just tell me, I will come. So then Mahaprabhu replied. Now Mahaprabhu is going to criticize his devotees. Prabhu kehe, ami nartaka tumi sutradhar, tumi aiche nachao taiche nartana amar. Nityananda Prabhu, ami nartaka, I am just a dancer. Tumi sutradhar, you are the wire puller. Have you seen a puppet show where some puppeteer is just pulling the strings and the puppets are just moving? So you are a puppeteer, you have made me a puppet, right? Tumi aiche nachao taiche nartana amar, the way you make me dance, I will dance, right? Sanyasakari ami chelila vridavan, tumi amalaya age ale adwaita bhavan. After accepting sanyas, I wanted to go to Vrindavan, Nityananda Prabhu, you brought me to Adwaita Bhavan. By cheating me, by showing me ganga and saying that it is yomuna and I innocently believed him. And then I have been in Adwaita Char's house, eating so much food. And now I have, I have made Jagannathpurie as my headquarters, all this is by Nityananda Prabhu's intervention only. Which is of course, Mahaprabhu has, has already decided to do this. But Nityananda Prabhu is instrumental in the manifestation of this result. So after that, Mahaprabhu is continuing to blame Nityananda Prabhu. Neela chala asite pathi bhangila mora danda, tomasabaara garhasnehe amara karya bhangga. Neela chale asite pathi bhangila mora danda, as I am walking from Santipur to Neelachal, Jagannathpurie, you have broken my danda. Tomasabaara garhasnehe amara karya bhangga, because of your mistake, because of, because of your intense affection, all my works and plans are spoiled. I want to set a proper example for all sanyasis. I don't want to just move around like this as a, setting a wrong example. I want to follow my principles nicely and then you are just intervening and doing anything, right? I can't take with you, it's great risk for me. Then, what about Jagadhananda? Take Jagadhananda at least. Jagadhananda chahe ama visaya bhunjaiti, yehi sahese hi bhaje chahe karate. So Jagadhananda expects me to accept all kinds of comforts. He expects me to do Sanskritification. And when I do some austerity, he will become upset. And kabhu yehi ihara vakya karire anytha, krothe tina dina more nahe kahay katha. If I do anything against what he tells me to do, he will become upset. And he will not speak to me only for three days and he will not eat only, I will have to go and pacify him. Okay, somebody will become upset with something and they will go into the manlela and then you have to go and pacify. It's too much for me, it takes so much of my time, I can't handle him. He gets emotional and I have to pacify his emotions. Okay, then take Mukunda with you, okay? Mukunda, my god. Mukunda hayena dukki, dekhi sanyasa dharm, teenava reshithe snana ghoomiteshayana. So as a sanyasi, I am supposed to sleep on floor and I am supposed to take cold water bath three times. And I have to follow my sanyas principles and do some austerities and seeing me performing austerities and accepting some bodily inconveniences, he will become so unhappy. Seeing him unhappy, I will become doubly unhappy, I can't handle his emotions. So don't, don't allow me to take him with me, okay? Amitas, and Damodar, what about Damodar Pandit? He is not emotional, he is not emotional, he is super strict. That's another, he is on the other side of the spectrum. He is emotional and he is super strict. Amitasanyasi Damodara Brahmacari, sadarahi amara upara shiksha dandadhari. I am a sanyasi and he is a Brahmacari. So as far as Ashram is concerned, I am higher plane and he is younger. But sadarahi amara upara shiksha dandadhari, he always holds a chastising rod in his hand and he keeps correcting me, you are not supposed to do that, you are not supposed to do this. So in this way, our, Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu started, started blaming his own associates, right? So there is an important reason why Mahaprabhu is doing all this. Ihara aage ami naja nibyavahar, iharanabhaihaya swatantra charitra amar. So in the presence of all these loving associates, I won't be able to maintain my sanyas rules and regulations. Because they don't have lokapiksha, they don't care for public opinion. Lokapiksha nahii hara krishna krpa haite, ami lokapiksha kabhu naparichadite. They don't care for public opinion, what public will think about me, they don't care, but I have to care. Because when a sanyasi gets some bad impression, sanyas life is supposed to be like a pure pristine white cloth. Even if there is small black spot on the white cloth, it is visible. So people will just magnify that white spot, black spot. So because people have a tendency to discuss and gossip about even small shortcomings or mistakes of a sanyasi, I am supposed to be extremely careful in my public behavior, social behavior and I am not allowed to take so many comforts that all of you are expecting me to accept. So because you are not allowing me to live life like a exemplary sanyasi, you are getting emotional seeing my austerities, I won't be able to take anyone with you, fine? So now, this is the affection of Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu's associates. So Mahaprabhu actually showed great appreciation of intense love for his beloved devotees. Because sometimes did you ever blame someone? But inside you have great appreciation for them, right? Sometimes appreciation may come in the form of some blame. Sometimes blame may come in the form of appreciation also. So Mahaprabhu is doing the first case. So Mahaprabhu is actually appreciating the intense love that his associates had for him and he was not at all offended by his intense, their intense affection, but he is just tense about common people, janta, okay? Although accusing them, Mahaprabhu is indirectly indicating that he was very satisfied with their behavior and their love is a source of nourishment for him. So now, in, in intimacy, love takes precedence. But in public, formality takes precedence. You have to be very formal, very, very reserved in public sometimes. But when you are at home with your own intimate relatives, your friends, brother, sister, parents. So when you are in your close circles, their formality doesn't take precedence, love and intimacy will take precedence. That's the difference between Vaikunta and Vrindavan. Vrindavan is a place of simplicity and innocence and loving relationships. But Vaikunt is a place of formality and a fish majesty, grandeur and all that, okay? So there is a lot of intimacy in Krishna's associates. And Mahaprabhu in this context, he is experiencing a lot of intimate dealings with his own devotees. Therefore, he doesn't want that intimacy to be displayed in public when he goes for South India Yatra. So that's why he said, no, you don't come with me, I can't handle you. Chaitanyaera bhakta vatsalya akatyakathan, appaneva iragya dukka kare na sahan. So Mahaprabhu, Mahaprabhu's affection for his devotees is intense, extremely intense. Akatyakathan, you cannot sufficiently describe Mahaprabhu's affection for his devotees. He is tolerating the inconveniences of his own sanyas life, seeing them. What does that mean? He is accepting some austerities of sanyas life, seeing him in, doing austerities, his associates are feeling pain, seeing them in pain, he is feeling that pain, okay? So Mahaprabhu is experiencing all that pain out of love for his devotees and to exhibit mercy upon all of us. Why did he take sanyas then, in that case? So to, to bless all of us. Because there were some people, one day Mahaprabhu was chanting gopi, 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 gopi like that. So one student came, Sanskrit student came and said, where in the scriptures it is mentioned that you have to chant gopi, 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 gopi? This Nimai Pandit is creating some new things. Then Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, at that time Nimai, he felt that Krishna is divine. Gopis are also divine. If you become purified by chanting Krishna's names, you can be purified by chanting Gopi's names also. You can say Radha, you can say Krishna. Devotees say Prabhupada, Prabhupada also, that is purification. So just like you chant the names of the Lord, you become purified. You chant the names of devotees whether they are Gopis or Sriramati Radharani or Prabhupada or any other. We say Jai Prahalat, we say Narasimha Deva Ki Jai, we also say Prahalat Maharahat Ki Jai. So we should worship the devotees also along with the Lord. But this person felt that, where in the scriptures it is mentioned that you have to say gopi, gopi? At least if you chant Krishna's names, you will get some piety. So Mahaprabhu found two mistakes in this person's statement. Number one, he said, you can't chant gopi, gopi, which is not proper for the reasons said. Second, he said, you will get some pious credits by chanting Krishna's names. But you don't chant Krishna's names for pious credits. You chant Krishna's names to develop love for Krishna, not for piety, not for punya. It's not a punya karya, it is adhatmika karya, okay? So Mahaprabhu just took a stick and started chasing that Sanskrit student to beat him. And that Sanskrit student just ran into the assembly of hundred more Sanskrit students, scholars and together they started criticizing Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. That this Nimai Pandit has gone crazy, he is saying gopi, gopi and he is doing Brahmana parat, we are Brahanas. He is trying to strike a Brahmana, it's too much. So they were criticizing, then Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu understood. He understood that these people are not taking me seriously. Thinking that I am one amongst them, I am also like them. These people are not accepting my words seriously. But if I take sanyas, if I take sanyas, then at least thinking that I am a sanyasi, they will respect me, they will bow down in front of me and that will purify them and I will be able to bless them with Krishna Prima. So Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu accepted sanyas mainly to deliver all of us. So when, in those days, sanyas is, is very much respected. So out of respect for a sanyasi, someone bows down in front of Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, naturally they will be purified from all their shortcomings. So Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu accepted sanyas to deliver all of us. Now Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is tolerating separation from his own devotees to, to preach Bhakti to people of South India, okay? So Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is so merciful that he is even taking a pause, taking a break from the intimate association of his own personal devotees who love him more than their life, to give us mercy. So this is Mahaprabhu's sanyas lela and its significance. Suvarna varno hemango, varangas chandanangadi, sanyasakritsha mahashanto nishtha shanti parayana. Suvarna varno hemango, Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu has suvarna varna. Like, like Sriramati Radharani, just like Radharani has complexion like suvarna. Taditsu varna chempata pradithagura vigrahe, mukha prabha parastakoti chara dhandu mandali. So Sriramati Radharani's bodily complexion is like that shining yellow color of a chump of flower, right? So her, the brilliance of her beautiful face is greater than one million moons put together, one million poranami moons put together, the two sharaapurnama moons put together. So Mahaprabhu accepted that beauty of, of Radharani, her complexion and he accepted sanyas, right? Varangas chandanangadi, sanyasakritsha mahashanto nishtha shanti parayana. He accepted sanyas to get respect from common people and forgive their offenses when they bow down in front of him and deliver them. Secondly, when he is a sanyasi, other mayavadi sanyasis like Prakash Ananda Saraswati and others, they will also respect him. Because he is a sanyasi, Sarvam Bhattacharya, who is a great scholar, he will also respect him. So Mahaprabhu wanted to preach to common people, to great sanyasis and to the scholarly world also by accepting sanyas. So it's a great expression of mercy. It's not that he is attached to receiving respect. Mahaprabhu is one of the prominent teachings of Mahaprabhu, stranayapi sunicheena, tarorapi sahisnuna, amanina mana dena, kirtane sadahari. So don't expect respect from others and give respect to others. This is Mahaprabhu's philosophy, but he accepted sanyas to take respect from others. For what? He is not in need of their respect. If they respect him, he will bless them. So by bowing down in front of the Lord, he will be purified. For our purification, he is accepting sanyas, okay? So Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu accepted sanyas in this way and he cheated his own beloved associates and he went on South India Yatra alone. So finally devotees have to surrender to him and then Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu finally accepted one, one assistant. Nityananda Prabhu recommended, my dear Lord, okay, none of us will come with you. Because if you give any one of us some preference, some extra concession to accompany you, other people will feel that it is partiality, right? So because there are so many people to give attention, to give mercy to, but if Mahaprabhu chooses one or two of them, other will be, other people will feel bad. So therefore, Mahaprabhu does not want to give special distinction or attention to one of his associates. He took a totally neutral new person, that is Kalakrishna Das, recommended by Nityananda Prabhu. So Mahaprabhu went just to show mercy on all South India people. Then, it's a long story. Then uh it's a long story. He went to Sarvam Bhattacharya, Sarvam Bhattacharya said, okay, fine, you please go, you are independent, who can stop you, okay? So Mahaprabhu moved, he came all the way to Alalmat. There, Mahaprabhu's uh beauty is revealed. Kanchanasadrisha Deha Aruna Vasan. Pulaka Ashru Kampa Sveda Tahate Bhoshan. Mahaprabhu's body is like Kanchanasadrisha Deha, it's like molten gold. Aruna Vasan, saffron cloth, molten gold, saffron cloth. And any ornaments? No ornaments. Pulaka Ashru Kampa Sveda Tahate Bhoshan. Pulaka means horiplessions, right? Here standing on end. Uh Kampa, Ashru, Ashru means tears. Kampa trembling, Sveda perspiration, these are the ornaments of Mahaprabhu's body. Like Krishna has so many ornaments like gunjamala, peacock feather, kaustubhmani and many other things in Dwarka. Separate ornaments in Vrindavan, different ornaments. Hmm but Mahaprabhu's ornaments are Pulaka, Ashru, Sveda, Kampa. Perspiration is his ornament, trembling is his ornament. Here standing on end uh is his ornament. And Ashru, tears as his ornament, because all these symptoms are exhibited by Mahaprabhu out of love for the Lord, love for Lord Krishna. Dekhi Nityananda Prabhu, kehe bhaktagani, yeirupen rakhyaage, habe grame grame. Mahaprabhu is dancing and singing in ecstasy and Nityananda Prabhu saw that and said that in this way, Haryanam Sangkirtan will happen at every place, right? Grammar, grammar, in every town and village, okay? So Mahaprabhu danced in ecstasy, uh then the tour began. So Mahaprabhu went to Alalmat and then he moved ahead, then he started doing Sangkirtan. Krishna 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 Krishna. Krishna 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 Krishna. Krishna 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 Rakshamam. Krishna 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 Paahimaam. Ramaraghava 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 Rakshamam. Krishna Ke Shava Krishna Ke Shava Krishna Ke Shava Paahimaam. In this way, in transcendental madness of ecstasy, Mahaprabhu is traveling in South India. And he went uh to different, different places and he embraced different people there. And as soon as they receive Mahaprabhu's embrace, they are infused with spiritual potency and they stand chanting Krishna Krishna loudly, singing and dancing and then they will go and embrace other people, they will also become mad when Krishna Prema. Like that Mahaprabhu has spread Bhakti everywhere, he infused Bhakti Shakti in everyone, hmm? So Prabhurakripaya Hayam Mahabhagavata. Sei Sabh Acharya Hayatari Lajagata. So Mahaprabhu's mercy made everyone a Mahabhagavat devotee there. So then, as Mahaprabhu uh went to Kormakshitra. There is a place near Srirakolum district that is called Kormakshitra. So there is a beautiful, uh nice Brahmana, he is called Korma Brahmana. So Mahaprabhu met him. And this Korma Brahmana very lovingly invited the Lord, please come to my house, take some prasad, okay? Then Mahaprabhu agreed to go to his house. So Mahaprabhu doesn't easily go to anyone's house, but Korma Brahmana is very special. Uh he went to his house, then Korma Brahmana offered prayers. Sei Padpa Padma Tomara Brahma Dhyanakare. Sei Padpa Padma Sakshat Ayla Mora Gare. Your divine lotus feet are worshipped and meditated upon by even Brahma. Those divine lotus feet now have entered my house, I am so fortunate. Mora Bhagyaera Seema Nayaya Kahana. Aji Mora Shla Gya Ayla Janma Kula Dhana. So there is no limit to my good fortune. Today only my entire janma, kula and dhana, everything has become successful, okay? Kripakara Prabhu More Yato Marasange. Sahite Na Pare Dukha Vishaya Tarange. Uh sometimes do you feel that the problems in this material world and in household life or professional life or whatever, whatever, even student life nowadays, it's like too much. Uh do you feel that it's like too much for you to handle? So Korma Brahmana was feeling that. Kripakara Prabhu More Yato Ma Sangi. My dear Lord, please show some mercy upon me and allow me to accompany you. I'll just go with you, you are a sanyasi, I'll just travel with you. Sahite Na Pare Dukha Vishaya Tarange, I am unable to tolerate the miseries caused by this materialistic life. I can't handle it, so I'll just leave home, I'll just leave family, I'll just come with you. You know what Mahaprabhu said? Okay, one more sanyasi with me, he's not, he's not getting excited, okay, Mahaprabhu. Mahaprabhu said, don't be so detached, like I'll give you one simple formula, okay? Prabhu Kehe Aichcha Bata Kabho Na Kahiba. Ghare Rahi Krishna Nama Nirantara Laiba. You don't speak like this anytime, ghare rahi, stay at home. Krishna Nama Nirantara Laiba, please stay at home and chant the holy names of Krishna continuously, okay? This is Mahaprabhu's hmm teaching. And wherever he went, whichever householder he met, he said the same thing, you don't have to change your ashram by the way. Right? It's not that Krishna will give preference only to sanyasis or brahmacharies, uh those are in the renounced order. Krishna will bless anyone who has sincere devotion. Whether they are householders or sanyasis or men or women or children or old people or Indians or Americans, Krishna doesn't discriminate, right? Krishna only sees the heart of a devotee. Prabhu Kehe Aichcha Bata Kabho Na Kahiba, don't speak like this anymore. Don't say that I will give up my family, I will also become sanyasi like you. You have already accepted household life, you have to fulfill the responsibilities of household life. Take care of your family and do what? Ghare Rahi Krishna Nama Nirantara Laiba, stay home and chant the holy names of Krishna. And don't stop there, there is one more thing that we need to do. Yaare Dekhe Tare Kehe Krishna Upadesh. Amara Agnaya Guru Haya Tara Eideesh. Yaare Dekhe Tare Keha, whomever you see, you speak about Krishna to them. Amara Agnaya, take my order, guru Haya, become a guru, become a teacher. So everyone can become a teacher, right? So anybody who is chanting the holy name of Krishna, who has little understanding of Gita Bhagavatam, can easily become a teacher uh and teach at least few people. Teach the neighbors, teach friends, teach family members, teach somebody who is passing on the road, chant Krishna's name, please. Amara Agnaya Guru Haya Tara Eideesh, please instruct everyone else also in Gita and Bhagavatam and chanting the holy names at your, at the best of your ability. Kab, if you do so, what is the result? Kabho Na Badibhe Tooma Vishaya Taranga. Kunrapi Yeithai Pavem Mora Sangha. The Vishaya Taranga, the waves of the material existence and material miseries will not disturb you if you personally chant the holy names of Krishna sincerely and study Gita Bhagavatam and inspire others also to do so while responsibly fulfilling all the duties of your household life. Okay, so do whatever you are supposed to do as a grahashta or as a student or as a teacher or as a businessman or some other job holder or professional, do that responsibility, do the needful for self-preservation and have this self-awareness and work for self-realization and help others also in their self-realization. So this is what Mahaprabhu said. So Mahaprabhu left Korma Brahmana's place. So I'll conclude in five minutes. At this moment, there is another devotee, Vasudev Leper. So he came, uh I think I recently mentioned this somewhere in Hyderabad, I was saying this Vasudev Leper. So Vasudev Leper, he had lepersi, he has oozing source all over his body. And he wanted to see Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, but Mahaprabhu uh by the time Vasudev Leper reached Korma Brahmana's house, Mahaprabhu has already left. Uh but but seeing his heartfelt desire to connect with him, to meet him, Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu uh again came back to Korma Brahmana's house and gave dharshan to Vasudev Leper. And he embraced him and he also spoke to Vasudev Leper the same thing. Uh he said, you please chant the holy names of Krishna. You will not become proud, you will always remain humble and the material uh existence will not bother you, will not uh will not disturb you, right? So these are some pastimes of Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu uh and there is no uh no other form of the Lord uh in which the Lord has exhibited as much mercy, mercy as he exhibited in the form of Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. The Lord has unlimited incarnations, machya korma varaha vamanah, narasimha, rama, parashurama, so many forms. Uh in these forms, the Lord has also punished so many demons. But only in Chaitanya Mahaprabhu's pastime, uh in this form, the Lord did not punish demons, he transformed demons. He did not kill anyone, he killed the evil propensities, he killed the sinful desires of people and he infused everyone with Krishna Prema. And there is another reason why Mahaprabhu's appearance is very unique. So in all the other forms, the Lord exhibited his godhood hmm and uh in Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu's in uh form, the Lord is not acting like God, he is acting like a devotee. Uh and he is teaching how to perform Bhakti, by personally practicing Bhakti. So that makes Mahaprabhu's incarnation very special. Shraddha Kari Ye Leela, Ye Kare Shravan. Achchi Rathe Mila Yetara Chaitanya Charan. Whoever faithfully hears all these pastimes of Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu can easily attain Krishna's lotus feet. So this is how Krishnadas Kavras Ghoswami uh concludes that section of Chaitanya Charita Amrit uh in which he glorified Mahaprabhu's uh pastimes. Okay, with this I'll conclude, it's three exactly. Thank you very much. Sri Chaitanya Charita Amrit Ki Jai, Sri Gaurpurnima Mahamohastav Ki Jai, Sri Prabhupada Ki Jai. Any questions or comments? Yes, Chindri Kama Tasi.
Hare Krishna Prabhuji Dandad Pranam, this is a question on behalf of Naimisha Prabhuji.
Naimisha, she can ask directly, no?
She went to school Prabhuji, yesterday she asked me. Uh I, even though I am saying answer, she said, no, no, you, whatever you say, it's okay, then you ask Prabhuji and say me like that, she said. So I am asking on behalf of her. Uh the first question she has raised, three question, first question is why sanyasis has danda?
Okay, okay, so sanyasis, Vaishnavas sanyasis hold tridanda, okay? So that signifies that they are dedicating their body, mind and words to the service of Krishna. That's the significance of holding a tridanda by sanyasi, okay?
The second question is that why Nityananda Prabhu uh broke uh Chaitanya Mahaprabhu's uh stick that is danda uh by thinking that whenever the Prabhu will go to Vrindavan and he will beat the monkey. So that's the reason whether he has broken, she is asking like that, I don't know what to answer to this question.
Very creative thought, but uh Nityananda Prabhu broke sanyas danda of Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu uh because he thought Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is the supreme lord himself. It's not necessary actions and protocols and formalities of sanyasa attire. Holding a sanyas danda is common for any sanyasi, but Mahaprabhu is above sanyasi, right? So he is on a very transcendental platform, just to prove that uh he need not follow this formality of holding a danda, Nityananda Prabhu broke it. He became upset because he wanted to follow this rule. He wanted to follow the protocol, but Nityananda Prabhu doesn't want. That's the reason why Mahaprabhu has told Nityananda Prabhu and all the other associates, you just don't uh come with me, okay? You will spoil all my principles and protocols, you just don't come with me, okay?
The third question is like the answer like there it's a problem. Why Nityan, why Mahaprabhu has a danda in his hand, why he wants that one?
Yeah, I answered right. Mahaprabhu wants to follow the principles of sanyasa very strictly uh and even accepting the symbols and formalities of a sanyasi. Uh that's why he wanted to hold a danda. Attachment is not to danda, attachment to teach all of us. Uh be an exemplary person, otherwise people will think that he is not holding danda. Uh huh, he is sleeping on bed, not on floor, uh or he is eating very expensive food stuff. So Mahaprabhu is very careful about public opinion, okay?
Thank you Prabhuji, thank you very much, thank you.
Manasvi.
Hare Krishna Prabhuji, yes, Prabhuji you told that uh Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is not accepting any associate. So he accepted Kalakrishna Das, what who is Kalakrishna Das?
Kalakrishna Das is a Brahmana uh recommended by Nityananda Prabhu. Okay, he is a simple Brahmana, um Nityananda Prabhu said, you please take him, some assist. And he is not so close to Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu like uh uh Nityananda Prabhu, Jagadananda and all other associates. So he is a neutral new person, so nobody will compete uh and complain to Mahaprabhu. We are not taking, we are taking him like that, that's real, okay?
Thank you Prabhuji, Prabhuji you answered my second question also, why did he choose him? Thank you Prabhuji.
Thank you, Hare Krishna. Any other questions? Yes, Manasvi, Saki Devi Manas, Meethavani Manas.
Hare Krishna Prabhu, thank you for the very wonderful session, Prabhu, always wonderful to hear from you. Now Prabhu, I had two questions. The first question is uh when uh Nimai Pandit actually went to Gaya uh to do Pindad for his father, he accepted initiation from Ishvara Pogi. What was the initiated name of uh Nimai Pandit? Because we see that Shri Krishna Chaitanya was the sanyas uh name given. And before that it was called Nimai Pandit, what was the initiated name of?
At that time name, I am not sure.
Not specified, uh that's why I wanted to check. Because in Chaitanya Charita Amrit, it was not specified and Chaitanya Bhagavatam, it was not specifically mentioned. Because uh later on he took sanyas from Mayavadi, from Kesavarati, who is in the Mayavadi cult. And that's why it's mentioned that he retained his brahmachari name which was Krishna Chaitanya. But then his uh his sanyas name was only Krishna Chaitanya, so there is this apparent contradiction which is there. If you request you to clarify, Prabhu.
I don't know what to say, I'm not sure. We can explore, okay?
Prabhu, my second question is uh you told that uh you know um developing all the good qualities, right? We have Bagavati, Yesyastha Bhakti, Bagavati Akkanchana, Surveyer Kuneshtatra Samasatitru. At the same time, it is also said Tranadapi Shunichana, Tarorapi Shushana, Amanina Mara Deena, Kirthani Asatad. You can chant the names of the Lord only when you have all the good qualities. And when you do devotion to the Lord, you automatically acquire all the good qualities. So as a devotee, should we focus on chanting Hare Krishna Mahatma more and more that we will acquire those good qualities? Or should we specifically endeavor to develop humility? Because based on our previous conditioning, at least for me, I can speak that I am uh you know generally a little more aggressive and humility is very, very difficult and you know enthusiasm is easy but patience is very difficult. So do we uh you know when enthusiasm is there, do we endeavor to utilize it to chant Hare Krishna Mahatma more and more? Or uh because sometimes over enthusiasm also leads to non uh uh you know not having the qualities of tolerance and patience. Because there's very uh this thing.
Yeah, enthusiasm has to be balanced, enthusiasm, determination. Uh all this have to be balanced with patience, uh respect, tolerance, uh etcetera. So uh as far as developing these good qualities versus chanting the holy names or doing Bhakti is concerned, Mahaprabhu himself answered it in his uh in his uh in Chaitanya Charita Amrit. Suklamvara Brahmachari came to Mahaprabhu, Mahaprabhu spoke to him the meaning of Harirnamayavakevalam Shloka. So he said he will be able to chant the holy names of Krishna to the degree you are humble. If you are humble, you can chant the holy names of Krishna. Kirthaniya Sadah Hari, Tranadapi Suni Chena, Tarorapi Shushana, if you are humble, you will be able to always chant. Then this Vasudev Leper story this that we just summarized at the end. So when Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu embraced Vasudev Leper, uh Mahaprabhu converted him, transformed his body into a very beautiful young body, right? So he received blessing from Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu on a spiritual plane and even on a physical plane. Hmm that's why Krishnadas Kavras Ghoswami says Dhanyam Tam Nomi Chaitanyam Vasudevam Da Yartradhie. Nishthakushtam Rupa Pushtam Bhaktitushtam Cha Karyat. Dhanyam Tam Nomi Chaitanyam, Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu bestowed great fortune upon Vasudev Leper. Nashta kushtam, his leparsi is gone. Rupa pushtam, his body became very beautiful. Bhakti tushtam, his heart also is nourished with bhakti. At all levels, Mahaprabhu showed mercy on him. Then Vasudev Leper said, "My dear Lord, I received this special grace from you. Uh, maybe I'll become proud, I may become proud. So what should I do? Hmm, I should be humble." Then Mahaprabhu said chant Hare Krishna. Okay, earlier he said if you are humble, he will chant better. Now he is saying if you chant, you will become humble, okay? So which one will come first? Basically, we begin performing bhakti yoga, the process of bhakti and naturally we will develop these qualities. Uh humility and all. When we improve in those qualities, we will be able to chant better. So our chanting and our humility both will uh increase parallelly. So what about efforts? Should I put all my efforts in chanting only and qualities will automatically come? Or should I put all my efforts in developing qualities only chanting will automatically happen? We should put both efforts in both directions. We should, we should sincerely endeavor to chant attentively. And we should also sincerely endeavor to cultivate all these Vaishnava qualities. Whether it is humility, patience, satisfaction, gratitude, compassion, all these Vaishnava qualities, we need to develop. That's why Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu in his teachings to Rupu Goswami, Sanathan Goswami, he also gave a big list of Vaishnava qualities, twenty-six Vaishnava qualities. And Lord Krishna in his teachings to Arjuna in the, in the thirteenth chapter, in the twelfth chapter and in the sixteenth chapter, he gave big, big lists of Vaishnava qualities. And even in Shrimad Bhagavatam also, uh multiple places uh there is a lot of emphasis on developing this Vaishnava quality. Right? So our three main scriptures, Geeta, Bhagavatam, Sisi. All three are recommending repeatedly that we need to develop Vaishnava qualities. Okay, we need to put some efforts in that direction. And they are also recommending Satatam Kirta Yantoma, we should also chant the holy names of Krishna. Right, we should also perform bhakti. So our efforts should be in both directions, cultivating Vaishnava qualities and also doing Sravanam Kirtham. And this will enhance this and this will enhance this. Both will go on parallelly. Make sense, Mathesi?
Yes, thank you Hare Krishna.
Thank you, Hare Krishna. Next. Sonali Kadum Mathesi.
Krishna Prabhuji, Dandatpranam. Thank you for my class. Uh, I always have one question in my mind, like why Chaitanya Mahaprabhu travels in South India, South India Yatra, not West? Or other Yatra, only in South?
Mahaprabhu uh traveled throughout South India. And he also traveled uh in Varanasi, Prajaga, Vrindavan, Bengal area. So his travels are in both directions, right? So, yeah, both.
But I have never heard like he travel must uh most of time in West. So it will be traveling West side also.
Western.
Not America, uh India's West, West side, like Gujarat, Maharashtra side.
Uh Gujarat, Maharashtra he came. Gujarat he didn't come. Gujarat and Jammu Kashmir, that side he didn't come. Not sure why he left them, but this side, other side he was there. Uh some Kerala, that belt, whole belt, Bengal, Jharkhand, Bihar, uh to Vrindavan, so. Uh that is that he left for all of us to do. He didn't go to years also, he left let, let Prabhupada go to all these places. Let all my future followers go to all these places. Lord Krishna also, uh he went everywhere. He did pastimes in Vrindavan, Mathara, Dwarka, Hastinapur, Kundinapur. He uh went to Ayodhya, he went to Swargaloka also, he went to Sutraloka also. He went everywhere, but he couldn't go to Badarkashnam, one place. And he departed. Before departing, he said, "I couldn't go to Badarkashnam, my dear Uddhava, you go on my behalf." So the Lord does some activities and he will appoint some of his devotees to continue to visit other places and carry his grace. That's all I can say.
Thank you Prabhu.
Thank you, Hare Krishna. Next, Neelam Mathesi.
Hare Krishna Prabhuji, Dandatpranam. Prabhuji, I have few questions. Like you mentioned when Nityananda Prabhu broke his sanyas danda, then you mentioned that he said uh Chaitanya Mahaprabhu that I don't have my hair also. What does that mean?
Hmm, uh I didn't get.
When you were saying about uh uh sanyas danda which Nityananda Prabhu broke. So then Chaitanya Mahaprabhu got annoyed and he said that you broke my sanyas danda and I don't have my hair also. If I have heard correct, I don't know. Then I couldn't understand about my hair, hair, you said hair?
Oh hair, okay, sanyasi has to have a shaved head, that's all I mentioned. I don't exactly remember the context. Mahaprabhu doesn't have hair. Uh, he, his only possession is sanyas danda. He has given up everything, sanyasi gives up everything including hair. He has told sanyas danda, he have, this is my only property, he have broken that, that's how he got married.
Okay, I thought, yeah, because then I thought why you mention about hair that I don't know. And other question like you mentioned about Vishwarup, his elder brother. So is anything mentioned about in uh Chaitanya Charita Amrit about him that you said that he had already left his body? And but nobody knew about it. Chaitanya Mahaprabhu being God, he knew and he didn't mention. When he was giving the reasons not to take his associates to South India. So I wanted to know about that.
So Vishwarup uh accepted sanyas at a very young age. Uh, and uh hmm and he did not uh come back to Sachimatha or Navadweep again. And he left the planet and he went to the spiritual world. So Mahaprabhu knew this. But uh he gave that as a reason because other people did not know. If they, if he gives that reason, I want to meet my brother, people may consider it valid reason and they allow him to go. That's why Mahaprabhu gave that reason and then he, he went for South India. Is that fine? Is that what you are asking?
No, I'm asking that is there anything mention about Vishwarup about his uh leaving his body and all anything as you mentioned about? I just wanted to ask that.
Okay, okay. Okay, Mathesi, that's, that's all I can actually.
Okay, and uh did Mahaprabhu go to Pandharpur? Like another Mataji was asking about West, he went to Pandharpur, right?
Yeah, he went to Pandharpur.
Okay.
Because that's in Maharashtra, he went.
Yeah. Okay, thank you so much. Hare Krishna, Dandatpranam.
Chitra Mathesi.
Hare Krishna, Dandatpranam. Prabhuji, I just sincerely wanted to thank you. Because you know like in ICF, we got the opportunity, Krishna's blessing, to revise Bhagavatam chapters, Prabhuji. I had no clue because I didn't attend those classes, but your lectures motivated me so much. I would have listened to those first three shlokas of first kanto, first chapter. Jenmadasyetanmoyobitharathas, Prabhuji, only because of that I am telling you, I could not only present. It has created so much interest in me. Daily I want to start the day with the reading Bhagavatam, Prabhuji. It is so self-explanatory and motivating. Thank you so much, Prabhuji. And the sincere thought in my uh heart, you know, every day I was thanking you and it came as a blessing today directly to thank you, Prabhuji. Hare Krishna, accept my obeisances, Prabhuji. Thank you so much.
Please, all of us also, that we also start our day with reading Bhagavatam.
No, thanks, Prabhuji. It was really very, very interesting, Prabhuji. Otherwise I would have, I would not have learnt YB C, Prabhuji. Hare Krishna, thank you, thank you.
Neelam Varimathesi.
Hare Krishna Prabhuji, please accept my humble obeisances. I would like to know um about Navadweep Dham in spiritual world in little detail, if you can give some more description. Also, um a devotee who is there in Golokavrindavanam, is he necessarily present in Navadweep Dham also?
Uh, in the spiritual world, there is Navadweep area also. As mentioned in Chaitanya Mangal written by Lochendas Thakur. I read it long back. So uh Navadweep is also there, Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is there. As Goranga, very nicely served by his loving associates and Haridas Thakur. Uh, he descended from that original Navadweep area and Brahma in this universe also joined Haridas Thakur, okay? The Nityasiddha, Haridas Thakur and Brahma, who appeared as Haridas Thakur, they are together participating in Lord Chaitanya's uh pastimes. So yes, in the spiritual realm also there is Navadweep Dham and in that Mahaprabhu is doing his lelas eternally. Uh, I don't have so much information, but this I have read from Chaitanya Mangal by Lochendas Thakur.
Okay, Prabhuji, the question comes because Mahaprabhu has opened the door for Golokavrindavanam. So devotees are entering to Golokavrindavanam, then who goes to Navadweep Dham, I mean?
Depends on uh the mood of a devotee. So there is this shloka from Shrimad Bhagavatam. Tva bhakti yogaparibha vitharitsaroja. Asesrut ekshitapatho nanunatha pumsam. Yajyadhyata urugaya vibhavayanti. Tattatva puhuprana yase sadanugrahaya. A devotee worships the Lord in a particular form that is close to his or her heart, okay? So and the Lord is very pleased to reciprocate with that devotee in that particular form. And he has no reservations in this, okay? So if one loves uh Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu's form hmm as, as Gorang as in golden complexion, uh one will reach Navadweep Dham. If one loves uh Krishna in dark complexion, okay? Playing his flute, one goes to Golok Dham. If someone likes uh Lord Ramachandra's sober, gentle personality, uh then he will go to Ayodhya Dham. So it is one Lord who is manifesting multiple forms and different devotees love a particular form in a particular mood and the Lord is happy to take them uh to uh that particular realm of the spiritual world uh to reciprocate with them eternally in that particular mood. And as far as Mahaprabhu's teaching Krishna prema, giving Krishna prema is concerned, yes. We can accept Krishna prema from Mahaprabhu and attain Krishna. And that Krishna prema is non-different from Gaurav prema because Gaura and Krishna are same. Sei Gora, sei Krishna, sei Jagannath, okay? So someone may like the Lord in the form of uh of Jagannathji. Mahaprabhu is worshiping Jagannathji also. Mahaprabhu is dancing in front of Ahobilam Narasimhadiva also, right? He is worshiping Narasimhadiva also. So Mahaprabhu basically taught Hari Bhakti, Krishna Bhakti. Uh, and there are multiple forms and the topmost thing that Mahaprabhu has given is Krishna prema in the mode of Vrajavasis and specifically the Gopis, right? But uh, but devotee, every devotee, every jiva is an individual with an individual mood wants to worship the Lord in a particular mood, in a particular form and that is always respected and acknowledged. And Murari Gupta wanted to worship the Lord as Ra- Ramachandra. Mahaprabhu said, "Why don't you worship Krishna?" Murari goes, "No, no, no, I want to worship Ram only." He said, "Yeah, fine, please go ahead." So the Lord doesn't interfere with our independence, our taste, our mood, okay? He wants us to enter the spiritual realm, somewhere you be there, okay? In spiritual realm, don't rot in the material world and don't glide down to hell. But which form in the spiritual realm that you like, you are according to your mood, then Mahaprabhu is okay to bless you, bless all of us in that individual taste. Does it make sense, Mathesi?
Yes, Prabhuji, can you please quote the verse number also which you, I mean, do you know the kanto?
I think third kanto, fifth chapter, you see fifth shloka or?
Okay, I'll find out, yeah, yeah. Third kanto, fifth chapter. Um, if time permits, I just want to know one more thing that we know that Lord is supremely merciful, but it is always wonderful that hmm why highest or the topmost fruit is given to most fallen people of Kali yoga? Why uh it happened? Because earlier so many pious and great people come, but it happened just now in Kali yoga.
Uh, when the qualification, the ability and eligibility of a person of a candidate is very less, very poor, uh the Lord gives extra concession, more concession, okay? That's why the people of the previous yugas also want to take birth in earth planet in Kali yoga. The people of the heavenly planets, devadas also want to take birth in Kali yoga. Uh, especially when Mahaprabhu appears uh in this particular Kali yoga. So why the greatest gift is given to the most fallen? The reason is they are most fallen, okay? They are most fallen and whenever the Lord uh appears as Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, he is extremely merciful. And uh the, his mercy incarnation, in this, in this particular avatar, he kept aside his godhood and he accepted the mode of a devotee and devotee is naturally more merciful than the Lord. And that too, the Lord is in the mode of, mode of the highest, topmost devotee, rather than supremely merciful, okay? So naturally hmm when the compassion of a devotee is exhibited by the Lord himself, the Lord is supremely powerful and the devotee is supremely merciful. When the supreme power of the Lord mixes with the supreme mode of a devotee of a compassion, the level of that compassion is unimaginable, okay? So naturally, whenever the Lord appears on this planet, in this most monophiscient Mahaprabhu form, he is most merciful. And he appears in Kali yoga only, not in other yugas because other people, okay, if one would give, give more, little more explanation. The people of previous yugas, this mentioned in eleventh kanto, fifth chapter, you can refer for more explanation, but I'll summarize it. Uh, people of the previous yugas, they are more qualified. They are very powerful, they are physically strong, they are mentally strong, they are intellectually strong. They are very healthy, they have long lifespan, they are very educated. They are qualified in hundred different ways, million sometimes more than an average Kali yoga person, okay? Therefore, the people of previous yugas, they don't feel the desperation to get out of this material world. Apart from their own personal great qualifications, the ambience of previous yugas, whether it is Kirta yoga, Ardavapar yoga, or Tritha yoga, that's not as uh disgusting as it is in Kali yoga now. In Kali yoga, the atmosphere is extremely disgusting. And now we are in first five thousand years only, already at some places it's very disgusting. The kind of culture people have, the kind of relationships that people have, the impatience levels and uh truthfulness, uh cleanliness, most like it's already quite degraded, but just imagine four lakh twenty-seven thousands ahead, what would be Kali yoga situation, okay? But in the previous yugas, the atmosphere, climate is not so disgusting. Uh, the climate is uh not so desperate, there is no uh not too many floods or hmm the too much of natural disturbances are not there, the previous yugas. And also hmm they would get clean vegetables, fresh air, no pollution, okay? So people are more truthful, so.